Okay. We're getting a few more chairs out, so we'll make sure we have a little better setup. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to a city council meeting and a reorganization of city council new members to our December 2nd meeting. A roll call vote, please. I'm sorry. Yeah. Yep. A vote. I mean, a roll call.
Here. That's okay, John.
I want to call your name again. Councilmember Patridge.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fraser.
Here.
Councilmember Qualcheck.
Here.
Councilmember Alefano.
Here.
Mayor Mueller.
Here. I have a lot of papers shoved in front of me here, so bear with me for a moment. May we have the pledge of allegiance, please? At this time, the privilege of the mayor is going to move the agenda around a little bit here. And so first, we will have a city clerk give us a staff report to adopt a resolution declaring the results of the November 4th, 2014 election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening before you is the resolution declaring the results of the November 4th, 2014 election. As you know, on that date, we had an election where three council seats were available, and we also had a ballot measure called Measure O. The county of San Mateo has certified the results from the election, and as a result of that, the council members elected were Rick Qualcheck, Debra Penrose, and Debra Ruddick. And they were elected to four-year city council terms. And then the ballot measure, Measure O, did not pass. So those are the results of this election, and there is a resolution for you to adopt this evening just stating those results. Thank you.
May we entertain a motion to accept the results?
If there's no further questions, I would move to adopt the resolution declaring the results of the November 4th, 2014 municipal election.
I'll second.
Moving to second. Any further comments? If not, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Patridge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fraser?
Yes.
Councilmember Qualcheck?
Yes.
Councilmember Alefano?
Yes.
Mayor Mueller?
Yes, ordered. This time, I'm going to read a statement for public forum here. And members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for a follow-up. So, thank you. So my first comment card is Rick Hernandez, please.
Wow, I wasn't expecting to go first. I'm Rick Hernandez. I live at 360 Poplar Street. Alan and Naomi, thank you for your service to our community. I welcome the new council. I have comments on the general plan update commissioned by the outgoing council. We are about to start public workshops, and I'm concerned that the draft documents do not reflect the priorities of our community. If we do not correct course, we will waste time and money and alienate the people who live here and the folks who come to visit. Here's why. The city reports that 80 percent of our town supports or strongly supports the protection of open space. In the community survey from May 2014, it is our number-one priority. Tonight, I am presenting a petition signed by more than 2,300 people who agree. Unfortunately, the draft plans ignore the consensus of our community. They include nude subdivisions, roads, and commercial projects on or along Redondo Beach, Poplar Beach, and Francis Beach, some of them on the coastal trail today. These plans would make traffic worse, contribute to sprawl, and destroy stunning views and wildlife habitat forever. While we all agree with Mayor Mueller that the bluff tops are sacred, why remove existing protections that keep them safe? Existing zoning and planned unit development strikes a good balance between coastal protection and property rights. This should not be changed lightly. The Sierra Club, the Committee for Green Foothills, and Coastside Land Trust all agree. We ask you to listen to the overwhelming feedback from our community and direct city staff to incorporate the following changes prior to public workshops. One, don't change any existing land designations unless those changes provide clear protection for open space, revitalize our small-town charm, or improve traffic. Two, provide maps of actual conditions on the ground, including sensitive habitat and wetlands, as required under city law and the LCP. We shouldn't waste time talking about changes in places where it's ill-advised or illegal. Three, clarify that with existing inventory and infill housing, we have more than 200 percent of what is required to meet our housing needs. Instead of starting with the maximum build-out and filling every spectacular view with development, let's start the conversation with what we love about Half Moon Bay. Let's make the targeted adjustments necessary to improve our community and protect our stunning natural resources for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Hal Bogner? Hal Bogner, please. Hal Bogner is going to speak.
Well, it's not often enough that one can have the opportunity to comment here on such a simply positive occasion as today. To be able to thank our departing council members for the many actions each have taken in the public interest over the years, to wish the new council the very best in making wise and useful decisions in the public interest over the next two years. Please allow me to note the great interest, the great increase in interest and activity by the local electorate in recent years. Shifting the council elections to major election years, retaining Cal Fire and preserving the Main Street Bridge by two-thirds votes, and now the election by very large majorities of a new voice, Dr. Debra Penrose, and of an experienced pragmatic public servant, Debra Ruddick, who has grown considerably through past service here and on the state coastal conservancy, bodes very well for the future of our town. I ask that all five council members be mindful of the increased public awareness and activity and the powerful desire expressed by the electorate to govern openly and transparently, to honor the needs of our town, to preserve the bridge at minimal expense, to resume liability for the public sidewalks, and to pause to reassess ongoing processes that began without fully accounting for all of these feelings now being reflected in our town's no longer silent majority. I wish you all a great term over these next two years, and the same for all who will follow you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Now I'll ask for presentations from our elected officials and their designated representatives for a very special evening. We're going to get them started because there's a lot of reorganizations going on tonight. So first, we'll ask our representative from U.S. Congress, Jackie Spears' office. Katrina Rill, please, come forward.
Thank you. I'm Katrina Rill from Congresswoman Jackie Spears' office. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I am here tonight to honor Naomi and Alan on behalf of Congresswoman Jackie Spear. Earlier today, she entered both of you into the Congressional Record, which is the official history of the House of Representatives. Don't worry, I'm not going to read the entire thing. Naomi has been on the council for over 20 years. Without her work, she's, first of all, she's been just an avid supporter of seniors, of farmworkers, of kids, and of all of the residents of the coast side. Without her hard work, Half Moon Bay wouldn't have its signature event, the Pumpkin Festival. The softball team, the girls' softball team, wouldn't have a permanent field, and we wouldn't have the Coastal Trail for Bikes that's named after her. Her accomplishments are just countless. She's just been a tremendous supporter of this community. And I'm going to read part of this Congressional Record. Naomi has been a voice of moderation and common sense for so many decades that one might also call her a civic thermometer. If it gets too hot in the debate, Naomi acts to cool things down. If the community isn't concerned about needed services or improvements, Naomi switches it on, switches it on, and heats it up a little bit. And stirs up questions and dialogue. Always moderate, Naomi can be counted on to keep the civic area of Half Moon Bay as comfortable as possible despite the inevitable challenges that occur in local democratic governance. Mr. Speaker, I am honored to call Naomi a close friend and colleague. I dare say that there has not been a more constructive leader in Half Moon Bay than Naomi Patridge. While we will miss her service to us all, we will have her example of thoughtful citizenship to inspire us for years to come. Alan, you have served on the council for the last five years. You have served during a time of tremendous challenges, including the Great Recession and the historic drought that we are in the middle of. You've served with distinction and contributed to the community. Let me read part of your Congressional Record. Mr. Speaker, serving on the city council is a challenging form of public service. Neighbors may have your phone number or buttonhole you in the store. You are privy to the most optimistic projections about the future of your town and to some of the biggest challenges to continued prosperity. Alan Alefano handled his responsibilities with aplomb, enthusiasm, and decisiveness. Half Moon Bay is a better community because he offered his services on behalf of its future. Please join me in congratulating Alan Alefano on his service to the outstanding community of Half Moon Bay as he returns to private life in a city that was guided by his hopes for its future and by service to all.
Thank you. And next will be our Senator Jerry Hill, please.
You see, the state has no money, but we have beautiful proclamations. Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity, as, you know, there's always, when there's change, and then there's sometimes sadness that goes along with it. And tonight is a sad evening for me in losing two good friends. Naomi and I go back many, many years in local government. And the thing, the part about Naomi that has always struck me has always been that guiding force for me as a gem for Half Moon Bay, but it has been her perseverance for Half Moon Bay in county, related to county issues. She was always the strong voice for Half Moon Bay in all of the different associations that she belonged to, whether it's the TA, the Transportation Authority in the county. And everything that she did was always looking at and supporting and bringing and putting Half Moon Bay first. And that's something that I think, hopefully, Half Moon Bay will continue in that regard because we want to make sure that the voice of Half Moon Bay is heard throughout the county and the region. And Naomi did that so successfully. The other things that I always was reminded of with Naomi was, as we were talking about different issues, was the fact that she knew everything about Half Moon Bay, whether it had to do with the Farm Bureau, whether it had to do with softball, whether it had to do with the Portuguese community, whatever it was with JACL, whatever it was in Half Moon Bay, she knew about it. She was the person to go to to find out what was going on and how best to serve the community. And she served this community with such success and is leaving the council. And I have to say that about Alan as well when I mention and have this proclamation for him. This council, this city, is at a point in time of such great, I believe, success, great stability, and with a tremendous future. And that doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of strong leadership. It happens at the top. Those who set the policy, those who give the guidance, and those who have made this the successful city that it is, are the five of you who have brought that together in this point in time. So thank you, Naomi, for the friendship. Thank you for the relationship. Thank you for your leadership in this county and for the hard work and the commitment that you've given to Half Moon Bay. Alan, unfortunately, we don't go back that far, but that's a good thing, maybe, because it's, but what I have noticed over the last few years is just how you have cared about everything that has occurred in Half Moon Bay. You have taken every issue, and you have distilled it into what you believe is the best direction for this city. And as I mentioned, the leadership that you've provided, the success that the city has, the greatness that this city has, is this, the legacy that you're leaving for the future, not just for the generation we have today, but I believe for the generations, the next one, and the generations that we'll never know will be grateful for the work that you've done on the city council and your time before in the Planning Commission. You owe, we owe a lot of gratitude and debt to you for that work. And now you're going back to continue with your business. And I know, as we talked a little earlier, the city council doesn't define you, didn't define you as a person, just as I think in most of us, it doesn't define us as the people we are, the public service that we have. But you gave to this city at every opportunity, every time you were asked, and I think that's very special, and thank you for that. And I have a resolution on behalf of myself, and it's the same as Naomi's. It's being presented by myself as the senator representing this area, and also by Assembly member Rich Gordon, who couldn't be here this evening. But Angelica is here, who will be, I think, saying a few words a little later. But on behalf of both of us in the state of California, thank you for what you've given to us.
Angelica, please, representing Assembly Member Gordon.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Angelica Cortez, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Assembly Member Rich Gordon. Rich wishes he could be here tonight, but as the chairman of the Rules Committee, he's up in Sacramento fulfilling his duties of ensuring the training of all of our newly-elected officials, so I'm sure he's having fun up there. Firstly, I would like to thank, say thank you to you, Mayor Mueller, for your leadership and service. Rich appreciates the close relationship that he's developed with you working on the Pillar Citos Bridge issue and looks forward to continuing and developing solutions for the future. To Councilmember Alefano for your service and invaluable contributions, Rich sends his gratitude for your leadership and commitment to improving and impacting change within the community. And lastly, to Councilmember Patridge, on behalf of Rich and our staff, I want to express our deepest gratitude for the years of leadership, guidance, and dedication you've brought to the city of Half Moon Bay. As a lifelong coastside resident and longtime volunteer, committed to strengthening the community's quality of life, ranging from local athletics, the public schools, transportation improvements, and overall having the best interests of Half Moon Bay in the core of your heart, your leadership and path is one to admire and one that will be remembered. So, looking onward into 2015, on behalf of Assemblyman Gordon and the rest of the staff, we look forward to working with the new council and want to wish you all happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. And representing Supervisor Horsley's office, Nichols, please.
Councilmembers, thank you very much. I don't really know what I can say more about someone who has their own trail the entire length of a city, or someone who has served more years on this council than pretty much anything I've ever done. But Naomi, thank you very much. Your 23 years of service on this council is remarkable, and you've really helped guide this city and make this city what it is. And I know, talking with people who live out here, people who live in Half Moon Bay absolutely love this city and love living here, and people who don't live in Half Moon Bay love visiting the city and love coming here on the weekends if they can get through '92. But, you know, this city is an amazing place, and so I'm not going to read it, but there's a resolution here from the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors honoring you for the years of service and everything you've done for the city and the nonprofits and the volunteer hours and, you know, making the Pumpkin Festival the great event that it is. So Naomi, thank you very much, and I have something for Alan afterward. And Alan, you came in at such a difficult time. The last, since you came on the last five years, it's, it has not been easy for any city, and you've done such a great job, and you've been, and you've been right there in the middle of every decision. And I know Supervisor Horsley's thoroughly enjoyed getting to serve with you on LAFCO and getting to work with you on matters out here on the coast, and you will be missed, but your service has been greatly appreciative, and so I have something here from him as well.
Our final card at this moment will be the legend of Cameron Palmer, please. Uh-oh. Looks like the flowers are starting to show up.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. Cameron Palmer up here, along with Beverly Ashcraft. I want to thank the entire city council for all your hard work and years of dedication. Outgoing councilperson Alan Alefano. Alan, you and I have had a lot of meetings over the years, discussed a lot of issues. I know how passionate you are about our community, and I'm sure this is a bittersweet moment for you, but thank you, and I wish you all the best, and your family as well. Naomi, we've talked about you a lot tonight, and that's because you're a living legend around here. I serve on the Half Moon Bay Beautification Committee, along with Bev Ashcraft, our founding member of the committee some 40-plus years ago. And Naomi's on that committee as well. She's a very, very valuable asset on our committee for us. People have mentioned Naomi's 23 years on the city council, which of course is just really unprecedented, the amount of mayorships and things like that, but it's really over 40 years of community service. When I was growing up, she was on the Parks and Rec Committee for almost 20 years or something like that, and that's over half her life, and I think that's absolutely incredible, Naomi, and a big hand to you. Thank you so much, Naomi. And yes, she has the civic responsibilities, but I have to mention the girls' softball and the high school coaching because it's just, she's just a living legend in the Bay Area here, and she's been a big inspiration for a lot of young women, the coaching as well. Also, at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to congratulate Rick on his reelection, Debra Penrose, and Debra Ruddick on their election, and I know you'll serve our town proudly, and congratulations to you. One more thing for Naomi, and I hope this isn't awkward, but I want to thank Howard, your husband. Because while Naomi was here for hundreds and probably thousands of meetings, Howard was at my place. No. I got to see a lot of Howard. And so for all the TV dinners and all the nights out, Howard, you are a blessing, and you put up with Naomi, and you deserve special recognition as well. Naomi, we have a presentation of flowers here for you on behalf of the Half Moon Bay Beautification Committee, and we want to thank you for everything you've done. So, thank you very much.
Well, at this time, I changed things up a little bit because of the busy evening everyone has, and I would ask you to bear with me for a few minutes because I would like to make some comments about this past year. And I think if you're patient enough with my comments, you'll be pleasantly surprised at the end, but I'm not going to share that with you yet. So it's truly been a privilege for me to serve as your mayor of the city of Half Moon Bay. I would first like to thank my fellow council members, and luckily, I added in there my wife. For the dedication and hard work they've always shown our city, without a doubt, the many, many years Naomi and Alan, Main Street business people that you've really represented very, very well. And as a council member, I'm a strong believer, and also as an appointee by four different governors, on having a great staff to surround us. I strongly believe the council's job is to choose competent, knowledgeable people that who have training to run the day-to-day operations, and I can't thank them enough for their continued support and wisdom. An amazing professional staff we have here in Half Moon Bay. They work hard for all of us to help get the job done in Half Moon Bay, to make it a great place for all of us to live. You have to remember municipal government is very complex, and it takes a team that knows how to work with the state and work with the federal government and work within the community and work through all the regulations they face daily. But I thank you for all the guidance, each and every one of you. I appreciate it very much. I'd like to thank the other agencies, too, that sometimes we seem to forget in communities. The San Mateo- The San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, our sheriff's department that patrol our coast side in our city of Half Moon Bay do a fantastic job, and our lieutenant-in-charge is always there, available for answering questions and helping people. Cal Fire, great job they're doing on the coast. CCWD, Sewer Authority, and many other member agencies of our SAM plant. Chamber of Commerce, Beautification Committee for their continued support, and the many, many businesses that step up and contribute to make this coast side a wonderful place as it is. And the state agencies that we have to deal with, as our professional staff has to. Coastal Commission, Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, whatever, our city attorney deals with them often. And, you know, I think as a community this year especially, we've lived through some heartbreaking events. We know what we're talking about. It was tough times, but we've had happiness, too. We've lost some great people, but we rallied together to give strength to the people that need it, and I think that's very important. I'd like to share with you some of the accomplishments this city has gone through and accomplished. Number one, our city attorney, Tody Hadadi, thank you very much. No litigation with the city the last couple of years. That's pretty amazing. I was at the city of San Mateo last night's reorganization, and all the cities face it. The financial situation of the city is solid. We've worked hard. I'm just amazed, when I was in front of Judge Vaughn Walker in 2009, that four more years from today, this new council coming forward, our judgment obligation bonds are going to be paid for. That's pretty remarkable work. Our credit rating went from AA- to AA, and as an elected official, we always hear about street resurfacing. Our staff has done a great job to organize that. We've repaved about 25 of our 27 miles in the area. We recently received a Metropolitan Transportation Commission award for the most improved streets, and I know some of you that don't have those, I'm sure didn't vote for us. Added energy-efficient street lighting on Main Street. We have our General Plan Advisory Committee that will be listening to all comments here in the future, weeks ahead, months ahead, and years ahead. With the Coastal Commission's blessing, we've gone through parking code updates. We've worked on our general plant circulation element, and it doesn't sound like much, but let me tell you, that's a lot of hours that people put in, a lot of hours. The dog park is very important to all of us with our friends, and we even have water farm now and a new fence down there. And the community meetings for the future of the skate park right here next door. And this building was falling apart, really and truly, and we stepped up and put money into it to rehabilitate it, to make it a great place for our teens to come and hang out, and also amazing contract with our Boys and Girls Club, with the Park and Recreation Committee, and the YMCA to provide that service. You come into this building, boy, it's active. They're doing a great, great job. And we've worked hard with our library friends to do this community outreach, and I'll let the mayor continue on that subject, or the vice mayor, I'm sorry. Youth Summit is continually be successful year after year with all of our agencies. We've incorporated disaster preparedness into the Rock the Block. The sheriff's office has held two community academies in English and Spanish. We've adopted Economic Development Action Plan, and I'm going to get through it quick as I can here. Leadership for the high school students, and not just for seniors. This goes for freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and we can thank Councilwoman Kowalczek for pushing that. And we're working really hard to continue to establish a homeless outreach team for the community members in need the most. And a final accomplishment this evening, and I'm glad Jerry Hill stayed, our senator, and also Assemblyman Gordon's representative, and our staff, as a complimented emergency, their dedication and their commitment and their persistence, and I have to say, their friendship was very valuable in this process, but more so, our staff was daily, daily on the phone contacting the Department of Park and Recreation through the Natural Resource Agency, and this afternoon I was handed a letter, and I won't get to the punchline yet, but it was an amazing letter sent to the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, and it says here, "The department has engaged with the city of Half Moon Bay," and you have to remember, back in August 25th, we put money on the table, and we said, "This Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge is so vital to all of us in our community." "The city of Half Moon Bay regarding a partnership to repair, replace the bridge in a cost-effective and timely manner. Based on these conversations, the department is prepared to develop a joint development agreement with the city in order to complete repairs of the bridge." I will say this, the bottom line is, and I can't thank Alex enough, and Magna, and Tony, and Javon, everybody that's working on it, Dante. In accordance with the above, the department hereby provides the Joint Legislative Budget Committee with notice of intent to expend up to $1,800,000 to complete the repairs of Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge in Half Moon Bay. That is big. And I just, I can't thank our elected representatives enough and everyone that works so hard on this. This is huge. So, we put the money on the table, but they've stepped up now, and that's a lot of ponies to put across the bridge there, so. And in closing here, again, I want to thank you, but, you know, it's a good time now, I think. We all love government, and I wish you could all be elected to a position sometimes because it's not easy. You take an awful lot of things that you don't want to hear. Some are truthful and some are not truthful, some are mean and some are not. But I come across Gerald Ford. I love government. We all love government. That's why we're here. And in his book, he said, "Political competition can be tough without being unpleasant and vigorous without becoming vicious. How do we balance all views and keep the viciousness away? I personally think it's time for all of us to stop and for the healing to begin." So, at this time, we will move on and we'll have recognition of, continued recognitions of outgoing council members, Alan Alafano and Naomi Patridge, please. So, I will start. I have some plaques up here for Alan. We could do it up there wherever you'd like. We can do it up there. So, at this time, Alan, as it's been mentioned all evening, this evening, of the great dedication and work you've done and the appreciation I can share with you from my perspective. You were elected in 2009, and you've served the city council, mayor is 2011. LAFCO is going to miss you. You were a great member of LAFCO, and your dedication on the city finance committee and a member of many different organizations in the community, and your tenure on the council and your business, community involvement, I can't thank you enough, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors, Alan Alafano, council member. And we have one more presented to you. That was a proclamation. This is a plaque in sincere appreciation for your dedicated service. There you go, Alan. And the next will be Naomi, and we have that all here gathered in. I can tell you, in the '50s, before a lot of you were born, down in San Gregorio, we had a 4-H club, San Gregorio La Honda 4-H Club, and those woodside guys, Lenny, you're here, those woodside people and Portola Valley people always wanted to beat us at the fair, really. And Naomi and her sister Ruth and Brenda Takata and my sister, they did artwork for our booth, and we won the blue ribbon every year, so. It never has gone away. She's a given since 1952, when I can remember. I was not at the booth. I was at the carnival trying to get a free ticket for a ride, so the guys that were doing the booth, you know, they get all the recognition, but, so we kind of go back a long way with a one-room schoolhouse in San Gregorio that's still standing. And what can you say about Naomi other than, really and truly, her dedication and her heart as a human being to all human beings is such a special gift. So, our gift tonight, again, will be another proclamation. You're going to need, Howard's going to have to build you another wall, and, you know, it's got to be an omen, you know? Last time you left, it cost us a few bucks, but then today you're leaving and the rain is coming. So, we had two inches of rain today, so thank God, Naomi, that we got that going. And finally, we have a beautiful gift for Naomi here in recycled glass for your continuous dedication and lifelong commitment of giving and sharing of your time. And you're welcome to say a few words here as we, oh, more flowers coming.
Mayor Mueller and fellow council members, I wanted to first thank Howard, as Cameron has said, for supporting me during my 25 years of serving on the council. I believe that we were able to survive the experience because we never talked politics. I also want to thank my family and the public for putting their faith and trust in me. It has been an honor serving the residents of Half Moon Bay through good times and hard times. A special thanks to our professional staff, who was always there to provide me the guidance and support I needed to make the best decisions for the city of Half Moon Bay. Thank you to my fellow county council members who supported and selected me to serve on county boards and commissions. The experience and networking I gained from those appointments were rewarding and helped put Half Moon Bay back on the map. I thank those commissioners who served on the Recreation and Planning Commission as my nominations. Last but not least, to my fellow council members who sat on the dais with me for the past 25 years. It has been an honor. I will never forget this experience. Congratulations to the new council members and Rick for being reelected, and Dr. Penrose and Deborah Ruttig. I wish all of you the best, and please keep the city in the best, healthy, financial shape that it's in right now.
Alan, please.
Good evening. I just want to say a couple of quick things, and I want to start off by saying some thank yous to various folks, and first of all, to my family, their constant support during my five years in the council, and especially my wife, or what she's put up with. Plus also to Mike and Courtney and their kids, and I haven't been able to spend as much time as I want in the family business. I have a little more chance to do that now. And I really want to give a special thanks to my fellow city council members who have taught me so much over the last five years. And believe me, when you get elected to the city council, you have a lot to learn. It's a whole new world opens up that honestly you didn't even know existed. So, Naomi, John, Marina, and Rick, you've been great friends, you've been very supportive, and it's hard to really put into words how much I think this council has done for the community from where we started five years ago to where it is right now. Thirdly, I want to give a warm thanks to all the great city staffers who make this town run. You get to see some of them here at the council meetings, but there's a whole bunch of them you don't get to see because they work behind the doors of City Hall, and the reality is, they're the ones that make our city run. The council, our volunteers, we may be the faces you see, but the staff is what really makes us into a great city. And last of all, I want to thank all the great residents in our community. When I was first elected, things weren't really too great in town. There was a lot of divisions, and people came in the store and they said, "I don't know whether to say congratulations or condolences." And I said, "Listen, from my perspective, I always see things as positive." And luckily, I don't want to say luck, there was a lot of hard decisions at the council had to make. Staff did a huge job in helping us with those, bringing the insurance settlements to us, and then helping us decide if we wanted to spend money pursuing them legally. That was not an easy decision, but it certainly paid off to our community. But the residents have been wonderful. I know sometimes they get upset about things, but if you take the time to meet them one-on-one, either in a coffee shop or going to their house or in City Hall, it's amazing how all of a sudden the attitude changes because you really want to help people. We're not really here to cause anybody any more issues than we have to. And as I leave the council, I'd like to challenge the new council to complete something every candidate agreed upon. Every candidate agreed upon this. We need a new library. I don't think there would be a more fitting accomplishment for our new council than to agree on a plan, a final plan for our new library. Much of the heavy lifting has already been done, and whatever support this council needs for financing or anything else, I know our community will fully support your direction. You just have to put it in motion, and the city will back you up. Our city has already pledged $11 million from the county for half the library. Don't let this funding slip away. Do whatever you need to do, but please build our new library. Thank you.
So now, this is the moment a large number have been waiting for this evening, and we will ask Councilmember Patridge and Councilmember Alafano to excuse.
No, you don't.
Oh, no. You don't want to excuse him?
No, we need to.
Oh, we may comment. I apologize. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, comments?
I'll get her comments. I know so many people have said so many great things, and just to add a few things, you know, Alan, you know, thank you. I think there's been no greater champion of Main Street businesses than yourself. As a Main Street merchant, you've really known what's gone on, and you've gone up and down and talked to people as no other council member has done, so I think you're going to be missed in that aspect, but I think we'll see you on the other side of the podium because I do believe you will still be that champion of Main Street merchants and downtown, and as well as education and youth. You know, as a father, as a grandparent of two lovely children, there's been so much in the last five years you have done that you will see the seeds of it. Those kids will see that, and that's probably a great legacy. You've been such a supporter of the Boys and Girls Club, as many of us have and everyone up here, and for us to turn this building over to the Boys and Girls Club and to have a skate park, I mean, these were things that, there's people that are 30 and 40 years old, that their parents had started contributing to that a long time ago, so I think that's one great legacy that you should be very proud of. And Naomi, you know, we could go on for days with you, and I know you don't want that, but you've been such a champion of things. But you've been such a champion of things, and as we all know, you're not going to go away, you're going to still be involved in many things. And we'll see you on the other side of the podium, and we'll get phone calls from you from things that you see or do, just you're as active. You have a compelling, a compelling personal story. And there's, so many young people can learn from you and what your life has been about. Your parents would be so proud. From what happened with them in the 1940s to where you are now is a true, human, American immigrant story that shall be written about and talked about. It is a tremendous legacy. And I think the best thing about it is, we're getting older, but you seem to be getting younger. And there's got to be something to that, to stay active, to be around children. It's like that Dick Clark phenomenon. You stay young when you keep active.
It's just Asian blood.
It must be it. But it really is, you know, we can look up to you in so many ways and we'll see you on fields, on Main Street, all around. So you're not going away, you're just, you're going to be doing something else on a Tuesday night. You're going to be home making Howard dinner.
Sorry, Cameron, it's going to go into your profits.
Councilwoman Qualecheck?
Yeah, I just have a few words. First, Alan, I want to recognize you for your leadership on the council. You brought so much leadership and skills that balanced my skills, that really served our community well. And to both of you, we went through the worst downturn you can imagine as a city. We faced insolvency and you led us through it. And you're going out with, leaving our city on top, strong financially and in good shape, and you should be very proud of that. And I really appreciate your leadership in making that happen. And Alan, thank you so much for serving with me on the Sewer Authority. We're going to miss you there, but I will think of you at every Sewer Authority meeting.
I will, too.
But I really want to, Alan, I appreciate your friendship and your leadership. And I know as you drive around the community just day to day, you can see the things we accomplished, you can see it's better. We've, we're starting the first community service, community-oriented projects in this city in many decades, several decades. And you're going to see that happen, and you helped make all that come to be. So thank you for that. And Naomi? Your lessons to me will instruct me my whole life, whether it's to call me and whip me into shape or to give me your counsel. You are an extraordinary leader, just extraordinary. And I'm so proud to be your friend, I'm so proud that we served together. You will always be my mayor. And so much so that I asked staff to agendize this item because I want you to always be our mayor, and I'm going to make a motion. I did some homework, I did some homework, and I want to honor you in a unique honor that I hope the council will support me in. And it's something done rarely, and I don't think we will see a seven-term city council person again. It's very rare. You're very extraordinary. And if you weren't, and if this wasn't heartfelt, I wouldn't make this motion. I move to designate Naomi Patridge Mayor Emeritus of Half Moon Bay.
I'd like to second.
I would be honored to second that. Good job.
She doesn't have the power to continue to give us hell or anything like that. She'll do that anyway, but we have a motion and a second. And I believe you've gone through the legal channels with our city attorney, so any other comments? Otherwise, we'll have a vote. All in favor of Mayor Emeritus? Say aye.
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 Aye. So ordered?
You abstain.
Councilwoman Qualecheck?
My final thing, Naomi, is I just, I have so much tremendous respect for you, and I hope that my leadership over the next four years will reflect a lot of the vision that you've brought to the city because we're certainly better for it. And I have a small gift for you also.
Good for the flower business. So I believe that's the final comments for this time. And to you, thank you again for your service, and you may step down at this time. Okay. Councilmember-elect Penrose, please come to the podium and with your swearing-in individual, Mr. Dave Cresson. Step forward, please. Push the button on the mic, Dave, please.
I'm a novice at this. Pleased to be here to help with this important part of this evening's work. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Deborah Penrose.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am now about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am now about to enter.
Congratulations.
Councilmember, please come forward. You get to come up here, Councilmember Penrose. You have to go to work now. This time, we will have our, again, newly-elected councilmember, Senator Jerry Hill. We'll be swearing in Deborah Ruddock, please. And I believe Rick Qualecheck also. Is that true?
First of all, thank you, Deborah and Rick, for your willingness to serve your community again. It's a real gift that you're giving to Half Moon Bay, and I know the community appreciates it very much because once you're elected and spend some time, you know the challenges and you know that the community truly appreciates it, and it is a gift that you're giving to them. So if you would be kind enough to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Deborah Ruddock.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties that I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Ruddock? At this time, would you like to make some comments, councilmember?
I just want to say thank you to the voters and the public of Half Moon Bay for having me back again. I really appreciate it. And I'm honored to fill a seat vacated by Naomi and Alan, who have incredible mojos, and there's pretty big shoes to fill, and I'll do my best. I want to say thank you to the staff for all the help they've given me since I was elected. I haven't, any of my questions have not gone unanswered so far, so I really appreciate their professionalism. I really look forward to working with my fellow councilmembers constructively. And last of all, I would like to thank Senator Jerry Hill. I asked him to swear me in because he is someone I admire very much because I believe he embodies what a good elective official is all about, and that is courage and conscience. And thank you so much for coming down this evening. So I look forward to serving you. I hope that you come to enjoy this process and desire to participate as much as I do. I want to make this a comfortable place for you to come and feel welcome. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes, I'd like to echo the thanks to Alan Alafano and Naomi Patridge for all of the incredible work that they've done. They are going to be very, very difficult role models to follow, but I'm going to do my best at it. And to the current councilmembers who've been so friendly and so welcoming and so helpful throughout the period between the campaign and the election. And I look so forward to getting to know you all better and working with you. I think you're just great people. And to the staff who's been very, very helpful all the way through, from the very beginning in August when I started this trip. My biggest thanks go out to all of you out there. You have been just amazing. I couldn't believe the amount of work that people were willing to do on my behalf, except that I understood they were doing it for themselves in the hopes that I would represent someone who had their interests at heart, and I do. I do. God bless you all. You have been amazing, amazing. Thank you.
Councilmember Qualecheck? I know you have a special day today also, so continue on.
Thank you. I have a, get comfortable, I've got a few things to say. So first of all, it's a special day for a lot of reasons. One huge reason is that today is my wedding anniversary, and what better way to celebrate your wedding than a chicken from Costco and a city council meeting? So it was a good day. But I have something for my wife, and I want to thank her, Jennifer. There is no more gracious, loving, gentle woman, and you let me get into this mess, and you are supportive beyond belief, and I truly can't thank you enough. And I have something for you, too.
Looks bigger than the one you gave Naomi.
That might need its own chair. So now my formal comments, I want to recognize the community and staff, and this is just the finest town to live in. It was just such a wonderful place. And I'm just honored and privileged to be a city councilmember, to have been your mayor, to be reelected. It's truly a privilege. When I'm strolling through the store and someone comes and shares something about a pothole or something that interests them, it's intimately personal. It matters to them, and it matters to me. And I'm honored that I can represent you and I can work hard to serve this community well. We're starting off in a good spot. We're in the black, we're in a strong position. And I ran for reelection because I wanted to finish some projects, and I hope the community will support those and my fellow councilmembers will support me in completing the library project, completing the skate park, MacArthur Park renovations, and those projects are so important to us. I also, it's also critically important to me that we develop a general plan for our city that's reflective of the full community, of everybody's input, but also protects our sensitive habitat and our bluff tops, and I'm adamant about that. I think it's very important, it's fully inclusive and also protects our bluff tops. Something really astonishing occurred during the election cycle. I met not one person, not two people, not three people, but many people who came up to me from the Latino community and said, I lived here for 20 years, 25 years, 30 years. I don't feel like I belong. And I'm outraged by that, and that's not acceptable to me. And a major priority for me going forward is to make sure our community is fully inclusive in every part of the process, every part of the government process, that our whole community knows they are served, that we are inclusive, and that we represent everybody. I want to give special thanks to Belinda Ariaga, who worked, I don't know if she's here tonight, but she worked with me to form the Half Moon Bay Latino Advisory Council, and that group will assure, ensure that we know the pulse of the community. And I welcome them to come to our meetings and share with us to create better bonds, to remove, to repair and restore broken relationships, and help this community heal in an important place where it needs to heal. I'm unafraid for Half Moon Bay to be a great place, and I know that working together, it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time in the agenda, I will call for nominations of mayor, and I would like to place Vice Mayor Fraser in nomination as mayor.
I will second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So ordered, congratulations. At this time, I'll call for nominations for vice mayor.
I would like to nominate Dr. Deborah Penrose as vice mayor.
I would like to nominate Rick Qualecheck.
We have two nominations. Assistance from the city attorney, please.
There's really no clear or correct way to do this under the law. One option would be to treat either as a motion and ask for a second. Another option is to simply vote on the slate or the candidate or the nominee of your choice, and if one receives a majority, three votes. And if one receives a majority, three votes, then that would be the person who would take that office, assuming that they accept it, of course.
Very good. Yes.
I'd like to recommend that we vote on the motions in the order made.
Correct. We will vote on the motion made for vice mayor for Councilmember Penrose. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yeah, there was, was there a second, staff?
Like I said, it's purely up to the pleasure of the council as to how you do that. If you want to do it by motion, then you should wait for a second.
There were no seconds on either motion. That's all right.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second and we will have a roll call on the first vote.
Yes.
I would like you to get your feet wet a little more on things and I'd be right there with you for vice mayor the next time, but not in this case. There's so much to learn and I know you'll get up to speed. So let's go another round on that and I would be happy to, but at this time, I would say no.
I want to echo Councilmember Mayor Fraser's comments. Tons of respect, lots to learn, and I will fully support you in that role when you get your feet under you in this role a bit more. So I will vote no.
Pass Mayor Mueller. I will vote no with deep respect. The motion has failed. We vote on the second motion of vice mayor nomination of Rick Qualecheck.
I'll second the motion.
Moved in second. This time, roll call vote, please, for vice mayor for Rick Qualecheck. Comments?
Wait, I believe I had made the motion, so I cannot second.
I will second the motion.
I'm going to vote no. Nothing personal, but Dr. Deborah Penrose was the top vote-getter in this election by hundreds of votes, more than myself. Nearly 1,000 votes more than Councilmember Qualecheck, who has previously served as mayor. So I believe that to really honor the will of the voters, that Deborah Penrose deserves to be our next vice mayor. Nothing personal, but I'm trying to honor the will of the voters here. Thank you.
We still have a motion. We had a no vote on, from Councilmember Ruddock. And continue on with the roll call.
Yes.
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 No.
So ordered, three to two. So we have Mayor Fraser and Vice Mayor Qualecheck at this time. And I will turn the gavel over to Mayor.
Thank you. And thanks for all of you for being here and welcome to our new councilmembers. Dr. Penrose, I know we haven't known each other and just had some brief meetings, but I've heard so many wonderful things about you. And I know that in your profession, you've brought a lot of healing and comfort to a lot of people. And that's, that's a very valuable asset, very, very commendable. And I know you'll use those skills of listening and being in touch with people to help our community go along. So I'm welcome to you. And to Councilmember Ruddock, we were just talking about it. Well, first, welcome back. And I have to say, I probably took your seat when you were going out in 2003. I was just coming into the council. So a lot has changed. We're, we're a different community and we're certainly a lot financially more stable than we were. And we're still trying to get a library. You worked on that many years ago when I was on Park and Rec on the task force. So that issue is still here and I know, Dr. Penrose, your support of the library. So I think that's, that's something that, you know, I've been passionate about and have worked with so many people in the last 14 years. So I think this is time now, especially tonight when we heard we got $1.8 million to fix the Pillar Cedars Creek Bridge. I really thought we, as a city, were gonna have to come up without all that money ourselves. So in my mind, that frees up two more millions dollars. And since our bond rating is, our bond rating and our status is so good, you know, we're in much better shape to even take out a loan. So I don't know, we'll have discussions about the library, but people have been so supportive of that. And, you know, this is the time to get it done. It's a big priority for the community and I think we can do that. Also, I want to say to my councilmembers, you know, five years is a, is a great time to be together. And because of that time, and I want to thank the community for giving us an extra year, that was something we didn't bargain for, but that worked out because in, in those times, it took having a clear path to get us out of the financial situation. We were at a point, we had 12 employees. And now that we have more employees and City Hall and the business of running City Hall is so much more efficient than it has been. And that's a great credit to staff and the leadership we had and some of the decisions, difficult ones that had to be made. I can see us going forward, really with a couple of things, and that's to continue our success and sustainability, sustainability for us as a community. And whatever is out there, I don't want to build on bluff tops either, not Redondo, not Poplar. I want to enjoy it as it is as well. So I think we need to sustain what we have and sustainability for our planet Earth too. I think that we need to do more as, as a community and as individuals. So I'm looking forward to a great year, 2015. And I'm happy, I've got my, my mom is here in the audience. Want to stand up or wave? No, she doesn't. And, and in past times, as I've become mayor, one person physically missing, but I know my dad is with us tonight. And really, it's been his, his guidance and his support that has helped me truly these last 11 years in tough decisions. Because he always said, "Just gotta be true to yourself, because you're always gonna piss someone off sometime. But just make the right decision so you can live with yourself. And you've lived here for 40 years and you'll probably live another 40 years. So do the best you can." And it's a credit to my father that I'm here today. So now I get to the great honor, switch gears quickly, and to thank former Mayor Mueller for his leadership this year. There were some unique things that happened in our community. And I say it's a credit to our community that when we had the incident of the shooting, you see on the nightly news what is going on, but the people of this community didn't react the way others have. And true, there may be some different circumstances, but there's an element of respect here. And through a very difficult situation that is still being worked through, there were a lot of community meetings. And I have to thank John for his leadership through that. That was not easy. You brought empathy and compassion to that situation. That still requires a lot of healing, but initially, the city reacted quickly to that and you did. You stepped up to that. So thank you, John, for that. Things could have been very different. And, and thank you also, as you know, John is a farmer, gets up at 4 o'clock in the morning. And believe me, there were, Jerry can probably attest, there were voicemails early in Sacramento trying to get money for the Pillar Cedars Bridge. John really did work his contacts. And I do want to thank Senator Hill for being here and our representative from Rich Gordon's office and also from Jackie Spears. These are three people in Sacramento and Washington that love Half Moon Bay, that know us well. You know them. They know every street like we do too. And that makes a huge difference for us in what we get. And we should still continue to pursue the grants aggressively like we have and work with our partnerships. So thank you, Senator Hill, for being here. And John, I know you really did a lot to talk to those people and your personal relationships has gotten us so far. So I do have something for you. Slipping it around the back. This is the ceremonial gavel that is in sincere appreciation and dedication for your service, Mayor Mueller, in 2014.
I just want to agree with you about Mayor Mueller's response to the shooting death of Yanira. I thought you handled things very, very well and made the city proud. So thank you. I want to just note that for the record.
Well, if we're all done, my first official business will be to adjourn and eat cake.